Good evening, everyone. It is 5:00, so I will call this meeting of the School Board of St. Lucie County to order. This is our regular meeting on the date of August 10th, 2021. We're delighted to see so many folks with us tonight, and I know we have quite a few joining us virtually. So, welcome to all of you, and we will proceed with our meeting. If you would first stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and tolerance.
And our Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter Pledge? As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Before we proceed with our Special Orders of Business, I do want to announce that if you desire to be a speaker tonight, an unscheduled speaker, please have your form filled out. We have folks circulating around that can bring them up to us, but please have the form filled out and in our hands prior to us moving into the consent agenda. Once the consent agenda starts, we will not be receiving any more forms. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, we'll move to our Special Orders of Business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call Lydia Martin up, and she will do our Special Orders of Business.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Gent. At this time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Michelle Turnage from the American Heart Association. She is the Youth Marketing Director, who will share some information about the partnership that she has with the school district, along with some school accolades.
So nice to be here in person, so thank you so much. My name is Michelle Turnage. I work for the American Heart Association. I've had the pleasure of working with St. Lucie Public Schools for the past four years. You've probably seen me in years past. I've been able to come and see you all and thank you in person, and I have the pleasure of working with your schools again this upcoming school year. My job is to partner with our schools in seven different counties, and we support the American Heart Association in a number of different ways by partnering together in our Kids' Heart Challenge program and our American Heart Challenge program to help support the American Heart Association in our quest for a world of longer, healthier lives and to hopefully get rid of heart disease. So, over the past year, I know this was a semi-difficult year. Our educators faced a lot of obstacles and certain things and definitely some different changes, but I wanted to come and recognize your schools before you as they did a phenomenal job this past year and in a challenging environment. So, I love to always come and recognize. These are our top three schools that you see here. Each of them participate in our Kids' Heart Challenge event. That is our elementary K-8 program, and they participate in the fundraising side also with our program, and it's an optional gift-giving campaign for students and their families, so no one has to actually make a financial gift. But, as you can see, several schools, along with the six other ones that participated, raised over $51,000 to support the American Heart Association and hopefully make a difference in the lives of others that are affected by heart disease. So, one in three Americans sadly are still affected, and while COVID has surpassed us sometimes in the number of deaths, at least in this past year, it is still the number-one killer of all Americans when you look at the larger picture. So, Village Green Elementary, or, excuse me, Environmental Studies was our top school this year. I'm so proud of them. Coach Copeland does an amazing job, and he was led by Principal Lehman. They did a fantastic job wrapping their arms around our program and really embracing their families and encouraging them to understand the whole community, whole-school approach. Morningside Elementary, again, has always been one of our top fundraisers, our top leaders. They have a fantastic duo team, Kyle McKenna and Andrea Seids, who lead this opportunity for their students and do a fantastic experience in school, as well as educating their students about heart health and the importance of that, again, led by Mrs. Melrose. And then, last but not least, another one of your fantastic schools, Floresta Elementary, raising close to $8,000 to help kids and adults with sick or special hearts. So, over the course of our partnership for this year, as I mentioned, they raised over $50,000 collectively over nine schools, and the American Heart Association was able to give over $4,100 back in PE equipment, gift certificates, and direct contributions to those schools, which we're really proud to be able to give back to them so they can support their programs as well. Over 12,000 students and their families received heart-healthy information, which included the heart-attack warning signs and also stroke. That's also really important because in the year that we just had, hospitals were reporting less individuals actually going to the hospital when they faced an emergency such as a heart attack or stroke in fear of contracting COVID. So, knowing those warning signs is really instrumental so that they can call for help, and those individuals can receive help as quickly as they need to. And additionally, over 800 students took a heart-healthy pledge online, so they either took a pledge to move more, to be kind, or to be physically active, which is really awesome that they're jumping online and they're taking a pledge to help take care of themselves, which I think falls in line a lot with your mission. I always love, I haven't done this in the past, but I wanted to do this. We do have a district dashboard, and it shows where our schools fall in line with the schools throughout the state. And so, I know that demographically, St. Lucie County looks a little bit different than some of our other counties, but I'm so proud to report that out of all of the counties in the state of Florida, St. Lucie County ranked, looking at the number, number 15. That little nut number was a little tiny on my screen, but I'm really proud of the support that you guys have for our program and our mission, and I think that your leadership speaks a lot to the schools continuing to participate in our programs as well. This is the total list of schools that actually participated this year. This upcoming year, we actually have several more that are coming onboard and are going to be able to partner with us, but each of the coordinators and their principals do a fantastic job of educating their students, not only in the regular side of their curriculum, but also being heart-healthy and making sure they're taking care of themselves. Last but not least, this is just a snapshot of what we like to call our heart heroes. Some of these are local individuals, and some of them are actually across the country, but each of these students here, they were born with a congenital heart defect, and so when we talk to students about our programs and the impact that they can make, these are individuals that we show them, and they get to hear a personal story so they can understand the impact that they're making within their schools as well. So, I do have a certificate that we have created for them. Mr. Gent was so kind, and he signed it for us so that we can present to them. I know that they're not here tonight, but I know that Ms. Martin will help me get them there. And then, last but not least, I wanted to take a moment. You had one student in particular, she was actually in kindergarten at Village Green Elementary, who really aligned herself with our mission and really became proud of what the American Heart Association and Kids' Heart Challenge does, and she herself, probably with Mom or Dad's help, let's be honest, raised over $1,000 to help kids and adults with sick or special hearts. So, he was also kind, along with you all, to, we're going to present her with a special award. She was the top student in St. Lucie County, which I think is really cool, and I wanted to recognize her for her efforts and what she did throughout this past year. Thank you guys so much for your support, and I look forward to our partnership for next year.
At this time, I'd like to invite two representatives from the Coras-Dickney-Harper Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution, Pat Blumquist and Lorraine C. Hillard, who will read a proclamation recognizing Constitution Week.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Superintendent Gent, and Board Members. The School Board of St. Lucie County proclamation designating September 17th through the 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week.
Whereas Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document and is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th through the 23rd, and...
Whereas September 17th, 2021, is the actual 234th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America, and...
Whereas the Constitution ensures the rights of every American and provides a framework for the administration of our country, yet few know the data or celebrate its importance in any fashion, and...
Whereas the United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights, and...
Whereas the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, otherwise known as DAR, which petitioned Congress in 1955 to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. Said resolution being later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week in St. Lucie Public Schools, and encourages all citizens to observe this important day in our nation's history through activities, learning, and local events. In witness thereof, the Chairman and Superintendent have hereon to set their hand and seal this 10th day of August, 2021. We wish to thank the Board and Superintendent Gent on behalf of the Coras-Dickney-Harper Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We truly appreciate this opportunity to share the knowledge and importance of Constitution Day and hope that by declaring this early for next month, we can give the school community time to access a wealth of Constitution Day activities for planning lessons for students K-12. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the Board approve the proclamation as submitted.
Board Members, we have a recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
I so move that the Constitution Week proclamation, September 17th through 23rd, be accepted.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any conversation? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're moving on to our STAR Awards. STAR stands for Special Thanks and Recognition. These are employees who are nominated because they go above and beyond and truly serve as role models for others. The first trio are the District Office Custodial Staff, Esther Alonso, Argelis Brito, Charmaine Martin-Brooks. These three were nominated by one of our attorneys, Barbara Sattika. She writes, "On behalf of the legal department, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the District Office's custodial team of Argelis, Charmaine, and Esther for their outstanding support throughout the school year. The legal department held multiple hearings and arbitrations in our building in person during the COVID pandemic. These three set up the physical space, moving tables and chairs to ensure social distancing, and provided a safe and sanitary environment for our employees, union partners, and participants to accomplish their work. Despite their many responsibilities during a challenging time, the custodial team was always responsive, helpful, and patient. We are very grateful to them for supporting our department." So, congratulations to these three exceptional employees. Our next star recipient is Transportation Routing Specialist Nicole Malpus. She was nominated by Principal Dejean Jackson from FK Sweet Elementary. She says that Nicole is a shining star when it comes to routing students for this summer's Learning Adventure Camp. Not only was she efficient, detail-focused, and very problem-solving oriented, she helped to get students routed to a great adventure at each school's camp, and we at FK Sweet would like to recognize her greatness. Thank you, Nicole, for all that you do for the students in St. Lucie County. So, congratulations to all of our star recipients.
That concludes that portion. All right, we will then move on to our ESO report. Mr. Freeland, welcome to the podium. It's good to see you tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. As you know, part of my role as President of the Union is to speak on behalf of our members, and I've done quite a bit of that, but I think for tonight, I'm going to allow our members to speak for themselves. I've got a number of emails I'd like to read to you from members, and hopefully that'll paint a picture. If not, I'll summarize it when I'm done. First one, and by the way, I've redacted the names in the schools. I think it's important just to get a feel for what the members are, but I don't want to out anybody. That's not something that we normally do. "I put everything they had into teaching synchronous courses for kids in seats and online using classroom instructional strategies, teams, and Canvas. In many cases, we taught what would be considered double the classes in anyone's book without additional pay. We were told at the end of last year that my school virtual is not being extended into this school year, but Mr. Gent's message seems unclear that the expectation is that we will be teaching online and in the classrooms again this year. There will undoubtedly be quarantine students all year long. This is to me asking us to, again, do double the work for the same pay as putting classes and content online is above and beyond sending homework home. If this is the expectation, and if so, is this part of the contractual agreement paid services?" I will say for this member, I couldn't answer that because nobody talked to us about what we were going to do, but I will mention that our teachers have three hours of planning a week to plan for over 30 hours of instruction. To put that in some perspective, for this summer, a team from the district who did a very excellent job, by the way, planned for new teacher orientation, spent several days planning for a six-hour presentation. Okay, it takes time to plan classes, whether they're online or in person, so that's something that we want to talk about. This one's in response to the Welcome Back message, and it gets right to the point. This is a expletive travesty. I'll return to that at the end, but it does show there's a lot of frustration out there. "Hi, David. The district has sent an email saying that all the same protocols related to COVID are to be followed once again this year, with the exception of three-foot distancing and optional mask. As of now, some elementary classes are at 24 students. We are rotating students for MTSS, and we have not received the bipolar ionization air filtration systems. Can you help clarify?" This was in response to an email that I sent to members. "Hello, Mr. Freeland. Why don't I see anything related to the lack of mask mandate and what is being done about it? Thank you for your time." At, and I'm just going to say PS1, so I don't name the school. At PS1, we were told that since we have our personal planning time in the morning, we'll be having meetings every day during the principal planning time in the afternoon. Can admin do this every day? Well, the answer is yes, but even without COVID, I'd question why we're having a meeting every day, but especially during COVID, why are we doing it in person? Today, I was given class rosters. I have three classes. I'll RESE the rosters for the rest of my team. The numbers weren't very concerning. The largest class was at 22. Then, our data specialist gave me a list of 29 students that district placed in fifth grade at our school and asked me to sort them into classes. I cannot believe the district had 29 new fifth graders. After sorting, half our classes are at 25, and the other half are at 26. We know some students may not all show up, but we also know they all might. How, especially in a year like this, is it okay to have 26 kids in a class? And what does this stop district from adding more? Where does this insanity stop? Not to mention roughly 25 of our students are RESE. Then, that also means that these 152 students are split amongst only four resource teachers, including our media specialist, so they will each roughly have 38 kids in their classes. This is too much even for a normal year, and now added COVID distancing will be impossible. This isn't safe, especially since we cannot require masks. Can anything be done? At what point do they add extra units, or at least stop sending more kids to already full schools? I've shared my concerns with administration as well, but I know there's little they can do since district determines all of this. Sorry, I know I'm rambling, but my team is extremely concerned about these numbers and very worried more will be added still. A member called this morning quite concerned about having to sign in daily using pen and paper like previously. Last year was all electronic, but this year, back to normal. She would like the district consider allowing employees to sign in electronically again since the technology and process already exist. Again, I'm not quite sure why we have people on salary signing in every day, but I'm not sure why we have to do it with paper and pencil and share those items. "Hi there. We were just told that we are not doing RTI in our own classrooms with our own students as we did last year due to not mixing students. So, this year, we were told that we will be mixing students for RTI. We are very concerned, as some of us do believe there is still a pandemic. In regards to your Facebook post regarding meetings, I wanted to let you know that in our district meeting last week, we were told that all ESE meetings, IEPs, eligibility meetings that must be held in person. We cannot offer teams to parents. If they ask, we can do it, but otherwise, we have to do it in person. Any idea of how they are going to work quarantine for teachers if their child is quarantined? Are we going to get paid, or do they expect us to use our days, or if we have to quarantine? Hi, David. Thank you again for all your hard work and dedication to help our teachers. What is it that we can do to get Governor DeSantis to change his mind about no masks in school? This variant, as you know, is more contagious. We need to keep our students and employees safe. I spoke to my administration today, and they said the school has to follow what our governor decides. I'm not actually sure that's true, but there's at least six districts in the state that have done what they feel is best for their employees and their students. 'Good morning. I hope all is well with you and yours through this strange time. I know I email and ask about our preschool requirements, but I want to expand on that. Since the Delta variant has been wreaking havoc, my husband's school sent an email about picking up a computer and conducting meetings via Teams for preschool week. I asked our assistant principal, and as far as she knows, it's in-person meetings for our school. When asked about the meetings, I also asked about open house. As a person with an autoimmune issue and doctor's notes from last year, I'm worried 3,000-plus people. We have over 1,200 students plus parents, grandparents, and former students who are there to say hi, in and out of the school, which for the past 15 years hasn't had air conditioning during after-hours open house. She told me, 'Open house is still a go. What can I do to protect my health?' I didn't really have an answer for. 'My name is Jane Doe, and I teach at Public School, too. You may have already addressed my question on Facebook, but I am not on there. Like many folks, I have a lot of anxiety and fear regarding COVID. I have been in public spaces less than 10 times since March of last year. Groceries are delivered. I stay home as much as I possibly can. I am concerned about open house and having so many people on campus. I have not inquired with my administration, but I did briefly text our union rep. She stated, 'The administration requires for six hours outside of contractual hours. I am just not comfortable doing this. It's one thing for the district no longer requiring masks and having to be in classrooms and now opening up to the possibility of transmission from so many unvaccinated individuals. I just find this irresponsible, especially considering new Delta variant. Is there any to get out of open house? Are any talks of canceling it?' This is actually threads from our Facebook page. 'Do we have any update on COVID leave? We already have staff members positive and others quarantined. These poor people are having to take time off they may not even have. My daughters, as well as teachers at our school, were exposed to a parent who came to open house while awaiting test results. She got a positive result the next day. My daughter, as well as one other teacher, don't have six days to spend. In fact, they have to lose at least a week's pay because of a parent is ridiculous. Just saw a post that Palm Beach County is enforcing facial coverings for students and staff. Are there any talks this will roll up to St. Lucie County yet? I doubt it. We were told we could place students back in table groups, and I've heard that from several schools. In one school, they reported that the principal gave them small tables and insisting they do small group together at those small tables. And we talked about this last year, that it's not really necessary to do small group that way. Our schools encouraging three-feet distance where possible, but that's almost laughable when I have 26 kids in my classes." So, I think, I think I'll spare you the other two. I think this paints a picture of where this is going. We have a lot of members that are concerned. They're worried that we're not doing our due diligence in protecting the staff and the students. Being a math teacher, I can't resist giving at least a few numbers. I'll try and get them to a minimum. Currently, over this past weekend, there were 56,000 new cases in the state of Florida of COVID. St. Lucie County, the positivity rate currently is 22%, trending up from 3.46% on June 14th. Last year, on August 10th, the positivity rate was 12.43%, and that was trending downward from 17.65 on July 5th. In the state, there's already been two youth deaths from COVID this year, and a record number of youth are hospitalized due to COVID in the state. I want to read two more things. First one's from Arnold Schwarzenegger. He says, "I always say to you, you should know your strengths and listen to the experts. If you want to learn about building biceps, listen to me, because I've spent my life studying how to get the perfect peak, and I have been called the greatest bodybuilder of all time. We all have different specialties. All of the virologists and epidemiologists and doctors have studied diseases and vaccines for their entire lives, so I listen to them, and I urge you to do the same. Some people say it is weak to listen to experts. That's bogus. It takes strength to admit you don't know everything. Weakness is thinking you don't need expert advice and only listening to sources that confirm what you want to hear." Okay, and that's talking about confirmation bias, and I think we're all guilty of that when we do our own research. We go out and we do a Google search, and if I say, "Show me the benefits of vaccinations", that's what I'm going to see. If I say, "Show me the downside to vaccinations," that's what I'm going to see. People who do research for a living, at the CDC and other places, there's protocols in place to prevent that. In addition to those protocols, they're peer-reviewed, which means other specialists get to look at that information, to make sure the studies are unbiased and based on other good studies. And I think that's what, part of what's happening here, is we all have confirmation bias based on what we want to think or believe is true, but not necessarily what is actually best. So, that brings us to my ask. And I want to be very clear about these. I don't want to be subtle. I'm just going to tell you where we're at. First of all, the two easiest and most consistent ways to protect ourselves and others is with masking and with social distancing. Teachers are experts. I can tell you, if we've got 38 people in a class, or 26 in a class, you will not be social distancing those people. It's just not going to happen. It's wishful thinking. Okay? So, we must have a firm and meaningful mask policy in place, and we already have one. It's Board Policy 2.91. It's already on the books. I'm not quite sure why we're not enforcing what we already have. The second ask, number two, is we're asking teachers and support professionals to go into harm's way. The least they deserve is real, meaningful COVID leave so that they're financially secure if they should get COVID or have to quarantine because of COVID, and there are federal funds available for this purpose. And finally, number three is, don't be complacent. I feel like we're being complacent. The face-to-face meetings and those things, that's not what we should be doing. Cases are going up. Positivity is going up. So, we're complacent, and we really need to rely on expert advice, true expert advice. Right? And that's really all I have to say. I hope the Board will... Actually, I will say one more thing. Sometimes doing what's right's not what's easy or what's popular. This is a personal story. There are members that I have that I represent who want to know why we're not surveying them to see how they feel about masks. The answer that I give is because I'm not an expert, and neither are they. Some things, you want to know what people's opinion is. It should be an opinion-based decision. Others like this, where the health, potentially lives of our members, of our students, and of our community are at stake, really should be based on objective scientific research, not people's opinions. And I, for one, am not going to go down the path where we base it on opinions, essentially somebody gets sick or worse, and then I'm responsible for that. So, I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland. Is anyone here from CWA to speak tonight? Mr. O'Leary, there's not anyone. Okay, just wanted to be sure. All right. Well, it is with great joy tonight that I welcome back our Youth Advisory Council representatives and invite them to the podium after their first day of their senior year, and they're here with us tonight to share some thoughts and views as they get together with other high schools in the county and begin their work. Welcome. Good to see you all tonight.
Good afternoon, School Board Members, Chairwoman Holly and Superintendent Gent. We are honored to be back at the school meetings after having taken the summer off. In the coming weeks, we look forward to working alongside Chairwoman Holly to establish our first cohort of students for the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, who will be catalysts for student voice throughout the 2021 to 2022 academic year. As representatives of the student body, we want to share our position on the ongoing debate on masks. Since COVID-19 cases continue... Since COVID-19 cases continue to reach record highs, there's an abundantly clear need for the mask mandate to be issued. We recognize the financial implications of issuing a mask mandate in accordance with the executive order signed by Governor DeSantis on July 29th. However, the safety and health of students should always be our priority. Therefore, we believe it is in the school board's best interest and for the safety of our students, especially those under the age of 12 who are ineligible for vaccinations, to issue a mask mandate with an opt-out procedure for parents of students. We are in uncertain times, but what health experts are certain of is that FDA-approved masks are effective in reducing the spread of COVID-19. We would also encourage the school board and district administration to ensure that each classroom has a supply of FDA-approved masks. Therefore, students who may not have access to FDA-approved masks but would like to wear one are able to do so. This would reduce any financial barriers for our students in obtaining an effective mask while also assisting students who may have forgotten or perhaps even broken their mask.
Further, many students have expressed concerns about the difficulty in obtaining updated district information. Though the district currently has an established presence on Facebook and Twitter, we would encourage the school district to explore other platforms, specifically Instagram. Approximately 72% of teens use Instagram compared to Facebook and Twitter, with 51% and 32% of teens using the platforms respectively. By using Instagram, the district may share its initiatives in a more effective manner with the student body. For instance, on subjects such as vaccination clinics or emergency updates. On behalf of the student body, we are excited to return back to school. Thank you to our teachers, custodian workers, school, and district administrators, and all other countywide personnel for their assistance in creating a smooth transition back to school, back into the school year. We look forward to this upcoming year and the possibilities to come. Thank you very much.
And we wish to take this opportunity to wish all of our students a very successful school year ahead of them. It is now time, folks, for us to move to our consent agenda. Board members, could I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Thank you, Dr. Mills. Any conversation? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, are there any items you wish to remove from the consent agenda for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none, we have the recommendation for approval of consent agenda items. Board members, could I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Go directly now to our superintendent and staff reports. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As everyone is aware, today is the first day of school, and I want to sincerely thank all of our staff members and our employees. We've had a great first day of school, despite some of the comments that were made here just a moment ago. I want to thank our bus drivers, who we were able to meet this morning. Some of the board members were out there early, early mornings, and they're still out there on the road right now, bringing our students home, and our food service workers, and our custodial workers, and our clerical workers, and our teachers, and support staff for the fantastic job they've done today. By all accounts, it's been a very, very positive day. I don't normally do this, but, Mr. Freeland, I will, do want to make a couple of comments. We have, we have a procedure that we follow here in the school district. Some of the items that were mentioned will go to the bargaining meeting that is scheduled for this Thursday, and they are in the agenda. Some of the other items, our normal way we do things is to work through the deputy superintendent, and some of those could have been resolved today, or some of those could have been specific answers given. We assigned almost 2,500 new students over the last two weeks, and those students go into the school buildings. And this is the case every year, and everyone knows this, at the 10-day, we have a 10-day count, and at that 10-day, the adjustments are made into the classrooms. Now, knowing because we have this spike in our COVID cases, and knowing that we care, that health, safety, and welfare is so important, you know, we'll try to speed that process up. But that is not unusual, and some of the other issues that were brought up, we can handle. There's a collaborative bargaining, had a, you know, session tonight with the board and explained the good collaborative bargaining that we've done in the past, and it's been very, very effective for us. And so I would hope that we would continue to follow those methods. While you have every right to present the concerns that they have, it's never been done before in a setting such as this, and so I'm hoping through good communication and following our existing protocols, we'll be good in the future on that. Again, we've had approximately 35,000 students attend our schools today, and that number will increase as the week goes on. But again, I want to commend our teachers, our staff members. Some of them are here to, this evening as well, for, by all accounts, an outstanding first day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Attorney, any report?
No.
At this point, under your report, because I'm sure you're too humble to bring it out, but we do, we have, I want the audience to know that we have received notice from Mr. Harrell that he will be retiring, and October 30th is his last day to be serving as our attorney. So there will be a search process underway with that, but I wanted everyone to know so that you'd have your opportunity to wish Mr. Harrell all the best in his retirement, and no promises that there won't be a celebration for you to send you off. So, okay. We will now move to our board member reports. And board members, before we move into item 23.1, I just would like to call your attention that 23.1 is for us to give our reports on the various meetings we've attended, things we've been doing. I know the mask is prevalent on everyone's mind, but we will save all masked discussions for 23.2, if that's okay with the board. All right. Hearing no objections. For board member reports and comments, Ms. Richardson, we'll begin with you tonight.
None at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I'm good. Had a great tunnel of hope today with Mr. Gent and Troy was there, and with the kids at Riverside, and wish them all well. Kids are beautiful. We had about an 85%, 90% attendance of all our, we have 39,000-something. We had about an 85% attendance today, right? Which is a lot higher than I thought it was going to be. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Mills?
No comment at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. Just a few things. Value Board Adjustment got canceled this week for me, and Concerned Citizens Meeting met, and we had the Boy Scouts come and speak, and just got to hear from law enforcement and how crime has gone down in our city. So that was relayed to all of us.
Thank you. And one of the committees that I serve on is the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, and we meet once a month and had two meetings, actually, since our last board meeting. And just wanted to report along the same lines that folks in all three of the counties that are served under there are eagerly working together on issues such as water quality and education and finance issues and that sort of thing. So it's a good board, an active board with representation from all counties. So I'm honored to be able to serve on that board and bring back news as it becomes applicable for us. Okay, that concludes board member reports and comments, and it is now the point to move into our 23.2 agenda item issue for a discussion regarding mask. This was added after the seven days at the request of a board member and consensus of the other board members. Since this item is on the agenda, it is up to the chair as to whether people are able to speak during this item presentation. I'm going to exercise that ability, and we will hear from you all tonight. There are a lot of you here. We have a lot of request forms, so it could be a lengthy process, but we are here for you. We want to hear what you have to say. I would ask, however, that during the course of your speaking and being a good audience member, that you please be very respectful of those in here. Keep the noise to where we can all hear, because we do want to hear what you all have to say and be able to digest that. So we ask for there to be almost quiet. I know there will be some oohs and ahs, but if you would keep your clapping not to happen, that would be very good, and to remember to be respectful so that when it's your turn to speak, everyone is also giving you their full attention. Before we move into welcoming you all to our podium for the ones that have asked, another board member had requested that Mr. Clint Spurber join us for a bit tonight. Clint is the director of our local Department of Health. He's been working very closely with our staff here. But, Mr. Spurber, if you'd come to the podium, we welcome you, appreciate the time out of your schedule to come and just share. Now, board members may have a question or two for you, so hate to put you on the spot, but you're on the spot. So, all right.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Gent. And, you know, I do want to start out saying that honestly, who thought we would be here a year later? I think it was about this time last year that I was up in front of you guys speaking about what is going on in the community. And my role as county health officer is I will be providing facts. I'm not a decision-maker. I'm not a policymaker, and that's what I'm here to provide today for you. So I do want to start out with vaccines. So our guidance is Florida Department of Health, that vaccine is the most effective way to protect yourself from COVID-19. The COVID vaccines continue to be vital in ending this pandemic, including combating the recent case increases that we've seen globally across the state of Florida and here in St. Lucie County. They significantly reduce the risk of contracting the virus, even if you are exposed. They teach your body how to fight the virus. They reduce the risk of severe symptoms, hospitalizations, and death if you contract the virus. They minimize the ability for the virus to spread, especially to our most vulnerable populations, fighting against emerging variants that can cause worse symptoms and spread. Now, the state of Florida, as you know, has focused on seniors first, and those were our most vulnerable populations, and seniors have had a very high vaccination rate of 84%. Unfortunately, this message is not being heard by others. So when we look at over the past couple of weeks, as far as the category according to the Centers for Disease Control, they rate how a community is as far as their vax, their high rates of COVID, and they break it up into a few different categories. And St. Lucie has been in a high category, and they do it by rate, so that what is going on in St. Lucie County could be comparable to Miami-Dade, or Henry, or state-by-state. So the high category is the one that is most severe, and over the past couple of weeks, because of the high number of cases that we have been seeing in St. Lucie County, as well as our high rate of positivity, it lended ourselves in St. Lucie County and most of Florida to really be in this high category, which is not where we want to be. And again, I'd still want to go back to that message of vaccine. What we have been seeing across St. Lucie County are high numbers and people who are getting sick, and we look at hospitalization rates, and I left this meeting, or, you know, I came straight from a meeting with hospital leadership, and what they have been experiencing are high numbers of cases also being over the past couple of weeks. And again, these are unvaccinated people. So as much as we can do to promote the effectiveness of combating this pandemic, it still will be the vaccines. So with that, I will pause if there are any questions.
Board members? Mr. Kelly?
If you don't mind, Mr. Spurber, we spoke this afternoon for a while, and I want to thank you for coming. I know you had a real busy day, and I just, just agree with you or disagree with you. Your job, sir, is not to opine. Your job is to give us the facts, just the facts, ma'am, right? That's your job, and then make recommendations with the facts. You, you're the guy that keeps all those facts. Am I correct, sir? That's your job.
To appoint with recommendations. I would defer to policymakers for recommendations.
Okay. And some of the things I've had, and I know our EESL report had, you know, read quite a few letters, if I could read the letters and emails and stuff that I had for the last two or three days from many of you all out there now, we would be here most of the night. So I'm not going to do that, but I would like to ask you about a couple of things that you can debunk, or not.
Yes, sir.
That I've read, that I amazingly, both sides, I've got things from both sides that I quite disturbed about. One of, one of the things I was told about the vaccinations, and I was told to go to this site and that site, you know, from certain people, and it doesn't matter, I'm not going to pollute, pollute, yeah, I don't want politics in this. One of them was very disturbing, and I was read by many people, was that the vaccinations, sir, it was targeting the top two, saying that the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccinations, when you get these vaccinations, these, this report, and it was on the internet, so it must be true, said that these vaccinations actually went into a person's DNA, and it went into your body, into your DNA, and caused all kinds of adverse things, and therefore nobody should be getting these vaccinations, sir. Can you tell me, is that, does it go into your DNA? And it just did Moderna and Pfizer.
Right. So the answer is no. It does not enter your, the nucleus of your cell and impact the DNA. And what I would like to really highlight is what you said, is when we are looking for scientific websites and looking for, whether we're talking about the Centers for Disease Control, or Johns Hopkins University, or known, known websites and leaders in the industry, that that's what I would hope that people are looking for, for their information. And to answer your question, no, the mRNA does not enter the nucleus of your cell and impact the DNA.
Okay. And another one that I got about the same thing in DNA is that I spoke to a very good friend, one of my best friends, known him for 25 years, great guy, smart man, told me today, I asked him about the thing that we might get into later, talk about with vaccinations for the high school children, 12 and up, how we were going to get into it and make certain recommendations, and if he'd, what he thought of that, and he said, "Oh, no, no." He said, "It's a proven fact," he said, and again, I read it on the internets, and he sent me what he thought, "is that the vaccinations are not the cure. The, is actually let all the children, the, these children get the virus, get the COVID." I actually, this is something that's out there. Let them get, and that's the best preventative way, is to let them get the COVID, and then they will have that, those antibodies in them, and that's the best way to fight it, not to have the virus. Sir, can you give me a, what do you think of that?
So one thing that we've been doing for several months, and even with Dr. Mills, I see upfront here, is we've been going out and advocating on different panels, what I'd call Mythbusters, and trying to address some of the concerns that people have had. And the one that you have said, I've heard numerous times, as late as actually yesterday, "I've had COVID. I'm fine. I have antibodies." And nor, I, I'd like to keep this with me just because of questions, and this is a good opportunity to share, is a myth. If you already had COVID-19, you do not need the vaccine. Due to the severe health risks associated with COVID-19, and the fact that reinfection with COVID-19 is possible, people are advised to get a COVID-19 vaccine, even if they have been sick with COVID before. We know that there's evidence that immunity doesn't last as long, and also having the vaccine is a safe way to combat the virus if it comes back again. Some accounts also believe that the vaccine offers better protection for coronavirus than a natural infection, and I'd say it's like that for viruses, period, that there are thousands and thousands of viruses that circulate around us all the time, and when you have vaccine-preventable, vaccines, preventable to prevent disease. you have vaccine preventable, vaccines preventable to prevent disease, that it's always a recommendation.
And I just have two more quick things. Another one I got, quite a few on, and was referred to a site, was by people that were advocating wearing masks. These were the people saying that we should wear masks, we want you, Mr. Kelly, to make everybody wear masks all the time. And they said, the reason they wear the mask is to prevent them getting the COVID. And I said, "I don't think that's really what it is. I think it's to prevent you from getting COVID to everybody else." So, if I go in a grocery store and the person before me is pushing a cart, and they sneeze or cough on that cart, and I have my mask on, and I grab that cart, and I just rub my face or whatever, that's how you get it usually. It's not the mask or not for you, the mask or for you to stop everybody else from getting from you. Is that correct, or can you debunk that?
I think it can go both ways. It definitely would protect me from spreading it, but there's also some proven effectiveness as far as if I'm wearing one, the likelihood of me bringing it into my body, it is also reduced. I mean, number one prevention measures that we want to do is always wash our hands. You have to introduce this virus into your body, don't lick your fingers, don't put your fingers in your eyes, and pick your nose, and put in your ears. I mean, you're introducing the virus into your body, so hand washing is very important to do.
Okay. And the last question I have for you, sir, if you can give me some stats there I asked you to bring. In the last seven days or the last couple of weeks, I was told that this week, in the last three days alone, that our COVID response, we're up the worst possible place that we could be, and it's just happened recently. You told me that that's not true, it's been like that for two or three weeks. Could you expound on that?
Correct.
And give us some figures on children under 14? I think you had remarks on that, how many have gotten COVID under 14 years old or whatever?
So, when we look at, and sorry to interrupt, when we're looking at our numbers, and I'm going to go back to vaccinations, is when the vaccine first came out the end of December, and for a good three to four month period, when we were offering mass vaccination clinics at the Feds Center, at the Civic Center, at the St. Lucie County Fairgrounds, we had anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000 people attend each event. Once that has slowed down, when that slowed down in the beginning of May, we still went out into the community, and we partnered with you guys, we partnered with a ton of different agencies to offer vaccine in a lot of locations. And this is in addition to vaccine that we transferred to 45 different medical providers, doesn't include Publix, and Walgreens, and CVS, and Walmart, and every other location you can get vaccine. But, over the past couple of months, we saw those numbers diminish. So, to answer your question in a long-winded answer is, once our vaccine administration, it went down in May, our numbers kind of stayed flat from May to June, but once July hit, our COVID numbers increased almost 400%, which is from about 32 a day to a little over 135 a day. And those numbers are pretty consistent with what we saw across the state of Florida. And over the past week, that number has increased to levels that we've never seen, as high as they are right now. And again, I'm going back to my main talking point is, the vaccine works. We are seeing people who are getting the viruses, unvaccinated people.
And you did have a number on the children that have gotten COVID recently? Was very alarming.
So, when we're looking at our seven-day cases, we are looking at the predominant ages, under 50 years of age. Bit specific to your question, over the seven days, we have had, it looks like 280 cases of COVID in people under, children 14 years of age and younger in the last seven days.
Thank you. Again, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
There are board members with questions of Mr. Spurber?
I just thank you, Mr. Spurber, for coming and sharing the data that you have as a health department. I personally spoke to a couple of doctors, one at medical, at Longwood, and the other one at the Community Health Center, one of them which is here tonight and will be one of the speakers. I think it's very important for us to have facts. That's what we need to base this all on, facts, because COVID is a killer, and it is extremely surging in our county. And we just need facts so that we can make the decision necessary for the safety of our children and our community. So, thank you so much for giving us that, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Clint, thank, Madam Chair.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Clint, thank you for coming out, we appreciate you coming out. I just got two questions. How many children have been in the hospital for COVID? And within the last month, how many children have been hospitalized because of COVID?
That answer I don't have. I can get it. I could tell you that talking to the hospital leadership, that their numbers have increased dramatically. As far as how many pediatric cases that each of three hospitals have, I don't know.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, what was that 200, those, what was that for then? Those are just cases?
Yes, ma'am, these are new cases in the last week.
But not hospitalized?
That I don't know where their final destination was at, I do not know. I don't have that list with me.
Okay. So, these 200 cases, just to clarify, is it within the last week?
That's correct.
And when you mentioned that there was a jump of that 400% in a short space of time, could you go back and tell me why it went from that to that 400%?
So, that's a good question. I don't know if we can definitively say that it was a July 4th weekend, or what the issue was. But what I could tell you is our vaccination rates, although luckily, they are increasing right now, not at the same rate as our cases and hospitalizations, but those 1,500 to 2,000 vaccines that we are offering daily for months and months and months, they dropped dramatically, and maybe because of the incubation period, as far as if I have the virus and I'm passing to you, that we have a delay as far as passing the virus from one person to another person, that potentially it caught up in July, whatever the issue was, across the county and across the state, that our numbers have just risen to high numbers. So, again, I don't know if there's a sentinel event that would illustrate, here's what it was.
I have one last question. Just because I don't know, how is this virus transmitted?
So, this is a respiratory virus, so it's transmitted in the air. So, that's the primary route of exposure. It enters your body, whether it's through your mouth, your nose, those are the primary routes. It's not a blood-borne pathogen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, one last thing. I think you told me today, I asked you today, this day today, back to last year at the same time, we are in just as bad or worse position than we were a year ago. Is that true, sir?
That's an accurate statement.
That's an accurate statement, okay. Just want everybody to know, and Madam Chair, just want to say, my intention here was not, nothing to do with for masks or against masks. My intention was to let everyone know where we are, and we cannot talk to each other. And although, I know, we are all acutely aware of what's going on right now, and we're all very, very concerned. The entire staff in this building has not been told to wear masks or mandated to wear masks. I did not see anyone, I don't know if any of my fellow board members, I did not see anyone in the building today without a mask. And they were not, Mr. Gent, did you tell everyone to wear a mask? They wore them on their own, didn't they? Yes. So, whether you agree or not, just be aware that COVID's back, and it's back strong. Be careful. And I'm not here to lecture, I'm just here to remind you, that's all it is. So, whether you're for masks or not, thank you, sir. I hope people get that information, I hope we get it out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spurber, for being with us tonight, and I know you probably have multiple things to do, so you're free to leave if you need to, but you're always welcome to stay as well.
Thank you all again.
We will move into our opportunity to hear from those of you that have filled out a form and wish to speak with us tonight. Just to reiterate the process, I will call folks as the forms were submitted, so we will call in order of that. Each speaker will have three minutes at the podium. Our attorney will be keeping the time for us. I hope our little time clock is working over there, so you have a visual as you're speaking as well. And when you come to the podium, even though some of you have been here before, if you would please repeat your name and address, so we have everything on the record correctly. And remember, as I mentioned before, to be respectful as folks are talking, and don't talk over them, or, and I would appreciate if you could hold your applause. Some were more inclined than others, but we really want to hear what you all have to say. So, we are glad you're here, bear with us through this process, because there are quite a number of you that wish to speak tonight. And I will call for three at a time, if you would just queue up behind the podium, and that way it'll save us a little bit of time as we go through. So, our first three speakers will be Reverend Kenny Mills, Pastor Ned Childress, and Alejandro Miguel, and I apologize if I don't get your names totally right, I'm trying. Reverend Mills, welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Gent, the school board. I want to thank you for the work that you've done to bring our district and our children to a rate of success. I'm a native of St. Lucie County that we've never seen in this district. I want to thank you. I also want you to know, Mr. Gent, and school board, and everybody listening, I pray for this district every day, every day. Matthew 18:1 says, "At the same time the disciples came unto Jesus, saying, 'Who is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven?'" And Jesus called the little child unto him, and set him in the midst of them, and said, "Verily, I say unto you, 'Accept you be converted, and become as little children; you shall not enter the kingdom of heaven.'" Whosoever therefore humble him or herself as a little child, the same is great in the kingdom of heaven. And whosoever shall receive one such little child, in my name receiveth me. But whosoever shall offend one of these little ones, which believe in me, it were better for him or her that a milestone were hanged about his neck, and that he were drowned in the depth of the sea. Take he that you despise, not one of these little ones." Jesus said, "I say unto you, that in heaven their angels do always behold the face of his father, which is in heaven." Verse 14, "Even so, it is not the will of the Father for one of these little ones to perish." So, getting to the rest of my point, got a minute left, it's time for this district, your school board members, Mr. Gent, to stand up and take care of our children. It's a shame that our governor would try to take funds from superintendents and board members, so there would be masks. And everybody that's raising your mat, your signs, their blood might be on your hand, too. I want to thank you for bringing Clint Spurber in here and giving us facts. It's not the politician's job to tell us about the health issues. It's shameful that you have to deny your job and protect our children by the threat of the governor threatening to hold back your funds. But we need leaders at this time that will stand up and protect our children in this district. As a matter of fact, if you don't stand up, I might set a campaign myself to unseat some of you.
Thank you, Reverend Mills. Pastor Childress, welcome to the podium.
Madam Chair, Superintendent, members of the board. My name is Reverend Ned Childress, a pastor at Allen Chapel AME Church in the beautiful city of Fort Pierce. My address, a residence, 1627 Merriman Way in the beautiful city of Fort Pierce. I stand here tonight concerned as well as confused. Confused about what, number one, our governor have said and have done, and this cababolated somewhat about our children and what we think of them. Because our children, those that are in our public schools, are human beings. Now, our governor, the first wave of COVID, to me, was all for the face covering. Here we are dealing with a stronger, a stronger wave, and now he's saying no face covering? As if our children are some type of robots. Our children have a heart like you and I, they have a set of lungs like you and I, they have veins with blood in it like you and I, and if they bleed, they're going to bleed red blood like you and I. I want to say to our board members and to the superintendent, I understand that you have a lot on your plate, especially with our governor and what he's saying and doing. Our children is our future, and if we allow them to continue to come to our public school without face covering, and we've heard the stats, there won't be no future. I'm asking the board to do what's right.
Thank you, Pastor Childress. Appreciate you being here. Our next speaker is Alejandro Miguel, and while he's approaching the podium, I will call our next three, Teresa Hall, Sean Reeve, and Alan Hall. No, Alan has checked that he didn't wish to be called on to speak, but I want to give him an opportunity if he does. So, okay, you join the, all right.
Madam Chair, who is this guy that's up now?
This is Alejandro Miguel.
He's the doctor that I've spoken with.
Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Superintendent Gent, Kent, Gent, sorry. People butcher my name all the time, I just thought it was fair to return the favor. But, and the rest of the board, thank you for having me today. I'm not as passionate of a speaker as the two that went before me. I'm not a pastor, but I am a doctor. I'm a board-certified family physician. I'm also the chief medical officer of Florida Community Health Centers. I have the responsibility of taking care of and providing the safest environment for my 400 employees and over 55,000 patients. I can tell you that without a question and without a second thought, masks are mandated at every one of our centers. I didn't come here to make friends, I didn't come here to make enemies, I didn't come here to hold up signs, I just came here to speak facts. What we do know is that the number of rates of cases in children in the United States has been steadily increasing since March of this year. has been steadily increasing since March of this year. So it hasn't just been the past few weeks, it's been the past few months. We also know that similar to adults, children with COVID-19 may develop respiratory failure, respiratory distress, acute renal failure, multi-system inflammatory syndrome, all these complications that come with having had COVID as well. And we're not even talking about the long-term effects of COVID, we're talking about the acute effects of COVID. We know that kids have the same similar viral load, which is the number of viruses in their nasal passages and their nasal pharynx that adults do, so they can spread the disease the same way adults do. We know that approximately one in three children hospitalized with COVID-19 in the United States were admitted to the ICU. That's 33% of kids that are admitted to hospitals across the country. And hospitalization rates in the United States are higher among Hispanic children and non-Hispanic black children. In St. Lucie County, we have about 19% African-American and approximately 16%, 70% Hispanic. So we have a significant portion of the population that is more vulnerable to the virus than the rest of the community. As stated before, the positivity rate right now is about 21% to 25% over the past week. Over 2,000 new cases in the past week, 280 of which were in children 14 or younger. And in the past two weeks, ER visits to St. Lucie County hospitals, 14, 18% of those were due to COVID. So it's on a rise. It's worse now than it was when we thought we were at our peak. So why are we going to let up the reins now? As stated before, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students aged two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccine status. Not only does the CDC state that, the American Academy of Family Physicians supports the CDC's updated guidance, and so does the American Academy of Pediatrics. As stated before, if we have a law issue, we go to a lawyer. If we want big biceps, we go to Arnold Schwarzenegger. And if we want medical advice, we go to our doctors and our physicians. And I hope you guys do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here tonight. Please, audience, let's keep our applause to ourselves for now. Teresa Hall, welcome to the podium.
Oh, thank you. I'm Teresa Hall. I live at 5985 Whipperwill Lane in Port St. Lucie, Florida. I've been a resident for 40-plus years. I have a great concern, because I have two grandchildren in school, public school this year. Masks can cause severe acne and other skin problems. The discomfort of a mask distracts some children from learning by increasing airway resistance during exhalation. Masks can tend to lead to increased levels of carbon dioxide in the blood. This affects headaches, stress level on children. So I am not for masking our children. It is not healthy, it is not healthy emotionally for a child. I'm upset that our county is going crazy. Just a couple of comments I want to make to maybe spur your interest in researching for your own. Statistics can be manipulated. I watched the interview with the creator of the so-called COVID test, they stuck up your nose, which I've had done. And he was, in fact, he died suddenly, but he was upset that they were using his test to prove COVID, because he said, "That test can prove anything you want it to prove." Let's not be deceived. There's an evil out there that we need to know about, we need to be aware of, because this is not just a flu. How many people died of cancer? How many people died of heart disease last year? Well, most people died of COVID. That's the truth. I did a presentation for the county school board, and one of my statistics, which I didn't have tonight, masks are like having a chain fence and trying to keep out a mosquito. So that's what we're doing. These particles are so small, the masks are not going to help. Just FYI, this week FDA announced it will not approve any vaccines. Did you know that Dr. Fauci said to President Trump in 2019, "Don't be surprised if you have to face a pandemic in the coming future"? Wow, wonder how he knew that? Wake up, people. There is evil abound, and our Father is going to expose it. Don't be shocked. Be aware that there is evil. In Canada, just this week or last week, a man was sued or was having a fine for disobeying the COVID rules. When he went to court, he asked for the virus isolation to prove there was a virus. He won his case because the whole medical community had to withdraw their case because they could not prove it. So wake up. Please do the right thing for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Reeve, welcome to the podium tonight.
Good evening. Again, I'm Shawn Reeve. I live at 7206 Santa Clara Boulevard in beautiful Lakewood Park, proud St. Lucie County resident for 22 years with my wife and daughter, who started Lincoln Park Academy. Eighth grade today, very proud of her. She was looking forward to going back, and we were looking forward to that as well. I'd like to start with some data. Former science tech, can't help myself. Most of the following is from a Forbes magazine article dated August 4th, last Wednesday. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, which has been mentioned already tonight, COVID-19 has jumped fivefold in children since the end of June. There was an 84% increase in the week preceding the article's publication nationally. 72,000 new pediatric cases in children occurred from July 22nd through the 29th, up from 39,000 the week prior. Florida has the highest rate of COVID hospitalizations in the country, pediatric COVID hospitalizations in the country, with over 32 pediatric hospitalizations per day between July 24th and July 30th. Reps of children hospitals in Alabama, Louisiana, and Florida all said last week that they have had more children in their care than any point since the pandemic started. We've already heard that point emphasized again tonight. Doctors are concerned in these hospitals that they're going to run out of beds and staff, and that they have experienced a flood of infants, children, and teens pouring back into the hospitals. Not just cases, but they're being hospitalized. Having, bearing that in mind, we previously had a mask mandate in our schools with far less risk for our children. To me, it's a matter of common sense to implement one now. You will be preserving their most basic freedom, the freedom to live a healthy life. Disney World has reenacted a mandatory mask policy. No opting out. Are our standards to be lower? According to the Florida Department of Health in St. Lucie County, there's an overall new case positivity of 23.9% for the last week, which is among the highest in the state, considering that anything over 5% is cause for concern. Florida's highest rate of COVID hospitalizations generally was Friday, August 6th. The previous record was set the day before. 20% of these cases are children. I've had the opportunity to speak to many of you this evening in the week prior. I appreciate the time that you've allowed for that. I'm asking you to please implement
Time.
...a mask mandate with no opting out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Our next three will be Julia Glattfeldt, Jerry Bueschler, and William Adderley.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Welcome to the podium.
I'm Julia Glattfeldt, 7106 Lorain Court, Port St. Lucie. I think it's ironic, we are talking about mask mandates when we just heard from the couple earlier about our Constitution. I see this as a huge problem for mandates, because we should be about choice and freedom. There are a lot of facts out there about whether masks are effective, whether social distancing is effective. I'm not minimizing the fact that this is a serious illness. However, the CDC and the boxes that the little masks come in, both state that masks are ineffective to prevent transmission of this virus. Did you know that 70% of communication happens here? It's especially important for children to see an entire face, so that they can learn socialization, they can communicate well, and so they're not increased in anxiety, stress, and social diminishment. I think it's also apropos to realize that even though this is serious, 99.7% of people who contract COVID do not die. It's 99.7% survivable. So the hysteria is a little over the top. I would like to remind you all that you are a school board and not a medical board. If you were a medical board, you would be abiding by the oath to do no harm. I think it harms children when they are told it's scary to breathe, that they can't communicate well because they can't see a whole face, that they are told it's scary and terrible to touch another person because they might get cooties or something. I never thought, when I was a kid, that playing the cootie game was going to be a real thing in 2020. So if you abide by the do no harm, I would say uphold the Constitution, teach our children that liberty is important. Don't get between their parents and the teachers. If they are being taught at home that they don't need to wear a mask, why should they be forced to wear a mask at school? It should be a choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here tonight as well. Mr. Bueschler, welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I live in Port St. Lucie for the last 10 years. I came up here when I retired at the age of 59 as a Miami Beach firefighter/paramedic. And I want to read you something. It's a Reader's Digest version of a letter that went out Monday to the governor from 140 doctors in Florida. "In the past week, COVID-19 has infected 19,000 Floridians every day and hospitalized an average of 1,800 Floridians daily. In the last week of July, at least 35 children were hospitalized every day for COVID-19 in Florida. The doctors who signed this letter are calling on Dr. DeSantis to do three things immediately: repeal the executive order and encourage the implementing of mask-wearing. He must resume reporting COVID-19 daily data in full, which he has stopped doing. He must do more to get vaccinations in people's arms. Waving the flag of personal choice, as Governor DeSantis does, even as those choices endanger the lives of others, rob us of freedom to safely eat out, be with loved ones, and yes, learn in schools safely. Enough is enough. Florida needs to mask up, get vaccinated, and have a governor willing to lead." We mandate, mandating masks is just one step. It's one step short of what we really need to do. As we just mentioned, Disney is mandating masks, but really, we have airlines mandating vaccines, we have hospitals that have mandated vaccines, we have Walmart corporate headquarters that has mandated vaccines. This is only the truly way to stop this pandemic. Just some educational visual aids. We've done it all the time, right? Got polio? Me neither. My aunt, I was born on her birthday. She died four years ago from complications of polio. It caused, you know, she had esophagus that, from the polio she had as a child, she couldn't properly digest things or even breathe, because the paralysis came back to her esophagus and trachea. Thanks, science. There's also diphtheria, pertussis, tetanus, measles, mumps, rubella, HPV, hepatitis A, hepatitis B. This is a shortlist of the things that vaccines have conquered. In addition, new cases, this is just July 30th to August 5th, 1,740 new cases, 23.9% 20.5% positivity under 12, 12 to 19, 24.3% positivity. Where my niece works, in Korea, they have, in the schools, they have dividers between each kid. The only time they take the mask off is when they eat, and they're not permitted to talk. As soon as they finish eating or drinking, the masks go back on, and then they can talk, and they can communicate. They have a rate of 42 per million. We're at 2,000 per million deaths
Time.
...in Florida and in the U.S.
If I could ask you, please, to state your name and full address.
Oh, sorry about that. Jerry Beekler, 1719 Southwest Leafy Road, Port St. Lucie, Florida. Troy, I hope you're doing fine with your, lots of your friends. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Beekler. And Mr. Adderley, welcome to the podium.
I forgot your paper. Bill Adderley, 2401 San Marcos Avenue, Fort Pierce, Florida. When I was coming up as a child in St. Lucie County, my district did not have the support, full support of the governor. My district did not have the full support of the school board. My district did not have the full support of the school superintendent. We got 10-year-old books from the white schools, raggedy, torn-up books from the white schools. I made it anyway. I made it anyway, without the full support of the governor, without the full support of the local school board, without the full support of the local school superintendent. I made it anyway, because I rejected what they thought was truth about a black man. Even my black second-grade teacher told me, "Don't go to college, because a black man can't be nothing in this world, and college won't do you no good." I made it anyway. I retired from the nuclear power plant, nuclear power plant specialist. It was my job. I taught the local doctors and nurses how to handle contamination and the proper use of protected protection equipment for the prevention of contamination. Now, I think you worked at the power plant. And I don't know why you got no mask sign over there.
Mr. Adderley, if I could ask you to please direct your comments to the board?
I'm sorry. My job was to teach protection, contamination protection, which easily translates over to viral protection. And in 36 years from mask-wearing and from the gloves and everything that I taught the doctors and the nurses, I never got sick from it. It prevented, and it controlled contamination. And that's the job. I was looking at the statistics somebody left about the contamination being in the mask. That means the mask done its job. It's supposed to be in the mask and not in the person. The mask does its job when the contamination is in the mask and not in the person.
Mr. Adderley, again, direct your comments to the board, please.
And that's what we wanted to do. We want the contamination in the mask. I rejected the ideas that people thought, and some people probably still think today, that black people, or whatever they think, that's untrue. Follow the science. Go with the specialists.
Thank you, Mr. Adderley.
Mash your children.
Thank you, Mr. Adderley. Our next three speakers will be Fallon Loughley, Chrissy Thanos, and David Palladine. We welcome you all to the podium. And again, just a reminder, your full name and address, please, before you begin sharing your thoughts with us. your thoughts with us.
My name is Fallon Loughley. Address is 1825 Southeast Mandrake Circle in Port St. Lucie. I have a first grader and a kindergartner in Village Green Elementary. I encourage them to stand up to bullies all the time, and I do my best to set a good example for them. As the people entrusted with keeping my children safe six hours a day, I ask you to be good partners in this endeavor. Stand up to the bully governor. I know he's threatening to cut school funding and your salaries, but if there's ever a time to stand up, it is now, when people's lives and health are at risk, including our children. I sat next to a nice woman over there who informed me that the pediatric cases in our area, the hospitalizations are 179. People like to cite statistics, but if you're a parent of one of those couple of children that will get deadly sick, those statistics don't matter. My daughter has immune system issues. She will be one of those children that gets very ill and will be hospitalized if she gets We need you to be the leaders that we need, that our children need. When the law is unjust, it must be challenged. You all know that everything those doctors, scientists are saying is true. It doesn't matter if 99% of the people in this audience are saying it's not. It doesn't matter what fake facts they bring to you. The truth is the truth, and you need to follow it, and you need to protect my children. Thank you.
Could please hold your applause. Thank you, Ms. Loughley.
Hi, my name is Chrissy Thanos, and I live at 133 Northwest Magnolia Lakes Boulevard. I live in a community with 478 homes, and my neighbors don't believe in getting the vaccine. So I have five people that live next door on one side and seven that live on the other side, and both sides don't believe in the vaccine. And I just found out that one of them actually, well, not that one because I don't want to give away an address, it's in a cul-de-sac, came down with a temperature and was diagnosed with COVID, and his temperature was 104 degrees. So he's going to be, that family has more children, and they're going to be going to school, and they don't believe in the vaccine, they don't believe in the mask. So this is what we're up against, and that's why we're asking, because we don't know who is carrying the virus, and so we have to really protect everybody. And I do believe in science, and I do believe in facts, and I hope that all of you do too, and will follow that. That's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Welcome to the podium.
All right. My name is David Palladino. I live at 2324 Southwest Altara Street in Port St. Lucie, and I'm going to blank that. I have school-aged children in town, and I also have a doctorate in molecular biology. I've been following the COVID primary literature since it was first discovered, and I've been fortunate enough to understand the process of the disease as it progressed, give my family safety advice, generally in advance of the CDC and WHO, by understanding what the risks are. The biggest concern that I've had over the past year was not if, but when we would see a more infectious strain. The Delta variant is that strain. Published evidence shows that a viral load of about 1,000 times higher than wild-type COVID is what we see with Delta. That incredibly high viral load is part of what throws out the window what we thought we knew about susceptible, unsusceptible populations. So students, kids, vaccinated adults, Delta can infect vaccinated adults. Delta can make children very sick. Children who get Delta can infect their family members. When we take a student population that has less than 15% vaccination rate, put them in rooms all day with no additional precautions, we're guaranteeing further community spread, we're guaranteeing infection of teachers, and we're guaranteeing infection of students. This past weekend, the numbers that were reported show a seven-day average of 27,000 cases per day. I looked back over the past month, we've seen a consistent week-over-week increase of about 40 to 50%. Extrapolating that out, about a month puts us at 100,000 cases a day. So within a month of schools opening, we expect to see around 100,000 COVID cases a day. This is going to give us increased school and classroom closures and burden the student and teacher population unduly. The last thing is that the overwhelming body of research evidence supports the notion that universal masking is protective in both socially-distanced and non-socially-distanced environments. A recent UK study estimated that risk reduction of about 65% was achieved with masking. It is soon going to be impossible for this board to ignore mask requirements for schools. The earlier that it acts on that, the more harm that it will reduce. By delaying by a few weeks or months, it will allow this disease to spread through the student population, and it will be much, much more difficult to get the toothpaste back in a tube. I strongly urge the board to make the right decision now rather than to have no choice later. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Our next three speakers will be Veronica Moore, Fabian Lozada, and Maladies Palu.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, all of you, Madam Chairman and Superintendent. Veronica Moore, 230 Northwest Shamir Lane, Port St. Lucie. And I did give you some handouts, and I'll try to make this quick. These are about the school guidelines about harming kids with the masks. There's a lot of things going on around here, and I think we all want the best for our children and these gentlemen that have given us a little bit of scripture about harming our children. That's exactly correct. But we need to think about their welfare, and we want to know, are we sacrificing our children on the altar of convenience or for us, or who are we doing? We want to keep their intelligence super bright for the school year. We want them to be intelligent. We don't want them hanging their heads down because they're wearing a mask and they can't play. I'm going to go through some statistics. Some of these recorded, things have been, in Germany, they've done some testing. Children wearing the masks include irritability 60%, headaches 53%, difficulty concentrating 50%, less happiness 49%, reluctance to go to school and kindergarten 44%, malaise 42%, impaired learning 38%, drowsiness or fatigue 37%. This is out of 26,000 children being tested. 29% reported feeling short of breath, 26% being dizzy, 17% were unwilling to move or play, hundreds more experienced accelerated respiration, tightness in their chest, weakness, short-term impairment of consciousness. The researchers concluded that the frequency of the registry's use, the spectrum of symptoms, indicate importance of the topic to call for more randomized controlled trials. But masks cause anxiety, panic attacks, headaches, and more. There's all kinds of research been done with all this anxiety, facial rashes, oral ulcers, panic attacks, infections, cavities, struggling to breathe, dental problems, throat abscesses. They adversely affect the respiratory physiology and function. The mask raises carbon dioxide levels in the blood. There's so many things about the infections. You know, this is a viral infection. Vaccines don't even take care of infections. So you better start thinking, we need to start using our common sense, we need to start thinking, would you want to wear a mask in a cubicle all day long, sitting alone, and just looking at a computer, not being able to really concentrate? Things are bothering you? You've got asthma, you're afraid to speak up and tell somebody that something's wrong? Afraid to go home and tell your parents? You don't want your parents to have to be bullied? You don't want to be bullied? You want to be just like everybody else? The governor has allowed us to make choices, and we need to think about it.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Fabian Lozada, 9401 Southwest Discovery Way. I'm a resident and business owner here in Port St. Lucie. We are imploring you that you approve the mask mandate. This new Delta variant is significantly more infectious than what we had previously seen and lead to a more aggressive infection. Kids can breathe with a mask. They did it last year, we know. They won't be able to breathe if they have a tube down their trachea assisting them with ventilation, like we have seen too. As a parent or a grandparent, are you willing to take even the slightest risk that your child ends up significantly sick or with a long-term complication of COVID? My instinct as a parent tells me that you wouldn't. Little kids do not know how socially distanced, and the only way to protect them is by wearing a mask. We cannot rely on common sense on this issue. In a near pediatric practice, a patient was seen via telehealth because the parent was positive for COVID. The parent decided to send the children to school because they didn't have symptoms, but they subsequently ended up testing positive for COVID, the whole family as well. But at that time, they already exposed so many others. Giving the parents the choice will endanger others inadvertently. We believe that children benefit from being in school, but without a mask mandate, inevitably, children will be sent to quarantine, interrupting their academic year. A simple act as wearing a mask can also save us from a shutdown, and we all come back to normal business or education as usual. If people can understand that you should not smoke indoors because it's harmful to the health of others, it's pretty simple to understand that if you put others at risk by not wearing a mask. Your duty is to keep kids safe. If you don't implement a mask mandate, you're failing them. So we implore you to implement the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Welcome to the podium.
Members of the board, thank you for your time today. My name is Dr. Milades Palau, 9401 Southwest Discovery Way. As local pediatricians and physician scientists, we are asking the leaders of our public school system to mandate universal masking in San Lucie County Public School to protect our children and community from COVID-19. The health of the public is in jeopardy. This is especially true for our children who are too young to receive vaccinations and will be returning to school. As of August 5th, nearly 4.3 million children have tested positive for COVID. Almost 94,000 cases were added this past week. Florida has the highest rate of new COVID cases and is the leading state in pediatric hospitalizations. Last week, we had 143 children hospitalized, and as of yesterday, the number had increased to 179. I have a patient in the ICU right now with COVID pneumonia that might not make it. Measures like a mask mandate could help us pass this surge and allow our children and their families to have a safe and wonderful academic year. Notably, Miami Dade, Palm Beach County, Brower, Alashua County, and Leon County have courageously announced a mask requirement for their students earlier this week. This type of measure does not need to be indefinite. Instead, you can review trends and revise recommendations based on hospitalizations, numbers of cases, and other data that you're tracking. If you give the option to opt out, this petition should be signed by a pediatrician or medical professional stating the reason why a mask is contraindicated. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the Pediatric Infectious Disease Society, and the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention have recommended the universal wearing of masks for all teachers, staff, and students in K-12 school settings, even for fully vaccinated. We recognize that this has become a politicized issue, but the school board alone has the opportunity to support what is right, just, and scientifically sound. We urge the school board members to show courage and follow the science in your decision-making process. If you were sick and you needed life-saving treatment, I doubt that you would call your government officials to treat you. I know you would trust your life to someone that has received the education to make good medical decisions to save your life. Do not let the government officials cloud your judgment into making the wrong decision. When the mortality increases because more children will die, we hope you can live with the decision you're making today because you have the power to save their lives. Be bold and courageous and stand up for what is right. It is never too late to alter the course, to reinstate strategies that kept us safe last year. We request that the school board revise the draft policy and establish a universal mask policy for the 21-22 school year. Sincerely, Dr. Palau and 40 other local pediatricians that have signed this letter. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Dr. Henley, Cedric McCutcheon, and Deborah McGrane will be our final three speakers. Welcome to the podium tonight.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Pinky Henley, 2306 San Diego Avenue, Fort Pierce, Florida. I brought my granddaughter with me because I want it to be real. I speak for those that are not here to speak, and I'm coming because our governor said that he represented the parents. If over 60% of the parents are saying, "I want my children to have masks," then how can he only speak for the other 30 to 40%? Now, I've heard everyone talk about the statistics, but COVID is real. My husband right now need a heart procedure. He can't get it here in St. Lucie County. You know why? There are no beds. He's on hold. This is someone that goes into a classroom, and she has to sit in a classroom where I'm told if they come to the door with a mask on, then they must keep the mask on all day. However, if they come to the door and they don't have a mask, they don't have to wear a mask. Now, I see all the signs that talk about choice, and yes, but I'm here, Mr. Jen, to give you a solution. We've heard the problem. They have a choice, and you know what that choice should be? You have enough rooms and enough schools in San Lucie County. Those that do not want to wear a mask, separate them. Put them on one side of the school and let my child, who I want to have a mask because she could come home, I'm 72 years old, I have to also think about my health. You all need to also think about, I've heard just today, how many of your employees have now contacted COVID. What is that going to mean? If they were in the classroom, 14-day quarantine. Now, you've been wondering about, and when I say you, I'm not talking to you only, I'm talking to everybody. I can't get this, and I can't get that. When those 14-day quarantines come, that affect that parent, that affect those children in the classroom, so that means this little child will have to send out of the classroom for 10 to 14 days without having to be in a classroom. Now, it is time for those who do not believe, if they have gone to the street committee, the back door, any door they've gone to and gotten the information, that's fine, but I also have a choice, and that choice is for my child to be safe. So I'm saying to you, separate them and let those that don't want to wear a mask, don't want to take the shot, don't want to be quarantined. You've got enough teachers that don't want to do it. So you can put those teachers over in that classroom with those who do not want to have the shot, do not want to have their children in a mask, and mine could be safe in the arms of Jesus Christ and me.
Please, please, hold your applause. Mr. McCutcheon?
Hello, my name is Cedric McCutcheon. I live at 5705 Northwest Croakers Avenue, Port St. Lucie, Florida. I've been residents of Fort Pierce for 49 years. I lived here all my life. I graduated in 1990. I know Troy, Troy, you know, in Westside Baptist Church. I work at Tropicana, been there for 20 years, and let me tell you, ever since And let me tell you, ever since COVID came, we had this COVID problem, ever since COVID got here, it was mandatory. We've been working our butts hard at Tropicana plant for seven days, every day of the week, every day, holidays, you name it. We've been working it with masks. Nobody is telling PepsiCo, Tropicana, that we can't wear a mask when we go to work. But I've been wearing a mask ever since COVID started, ever since COVID started, I've been wearing a mask. I ain't dead yet. But guess what? I got fellow employees who feel the same way, like a lot of people, who don't want to wear a mask. Unfortunately, some of them ain't alive today because they didn't believe that COVID is for real. Now, I just heard from a friend, a coworker of mine, he got two nieces who's only 13 and 12 is in hospital because of COVID. And my question is, you know, I came, I've never been in this kind of setting before. I never, you know, I'm usually not the type that want to speak out. But the simple thing, the reason why I'm speaking out is because I'm a concerned father. I'm not coming here as a Republican, I'm not coming here as a Democrat, I'm coming here as a human being. Because we really need to make this thing mask mandated. Like the pediatrician before I said, maybe we could do it temporarily. Because my son had to be quarantined three times last year. I had to get off from work and make sure they go pick him up while he loses time. This is his senior year. He would like to enjoy his senior year without having to worry about being quarantined. I'm sure all the kids want to do the same thing, go to school and enjoy school without having to worry about being quarantined. Because what people don't understand is that it's affecting people's pocket. Now, everybody is able to, is living from paycheck to paycheck and can't afford to be off work because their kid caught COVID or some other kid caught COVID. So if anybody ever have a problem with it, maybe they need to want to pay people bills. When they get these medical bills, I'm going to send them your way so you can pay all their medical bills.
Is Deborah McGrane still in the audience? Okay.
Due to my passion to speak and being first, I didn't give my name and address. Reverend Kenneth Mills, Sr., 1330 Southwest Briarwood Drive, Port St. Lucie, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Mills. That concludes the list of speakers that we had signed up for this evening. At this point, Mr. Superintendent, I will ask if you have a recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I make a recommendation, just a couple of comments that I'd like to share with the board and with the audience. And first off, I want to thank everyone that's here this evening and those that are watching. This is democracy. That's what it's about. It's about people with opposing views, making those views known. You come to your elected officials, and then decisions have to be made. And we're charged with protecting our students, and we're charged with their health, safety, and welfare. We're also charged with their academics. And that hasn't really been talked about too much tonight, where the academics of our students and how last year there was a decline across the country, as well as in the state of Florida, as well as right here in San Lucie County. And that's affected some children more than it's affected others, but those that have been affected the most have the highest hill to climb to get back to where they need to be. There's some other data that I would like to share with the board regarding starting school. We start at school today, our first day, and as I said before, a very successful day. But we started without 500 boys and girls and young people that were under quarantine. That number is double what it was in January when we were at the height of the pandemic. We also have, as was mentioned, staff members. We had approximately 84 teachers and staff that could not report to work today because they had either tested positive or awaiting test results or they were in the middle of quarantine. Every time one of those teachers is not in front of those students, every time one of those students is not in a seat in that classroom, it does have a detrimental and negative effect on not only their academics, but their social, emotional well-being as well. I have thought about this long and hard, and I know the board will have some discussions. But in light of this information, my recommendation would be that facial coverings or masks be required to be worn by students at all times while indoors and on school district property. This includes, but is not limited to, any facility, building, or bus owned, leased, or operated by the school district. I would also recommend that the parent or legal guardian of the student shall have the right and choice to opt out from the wearing of the face covering or mask. And I recommend that this topic would be revisited at subsequent regularly scheduled board meetings as necessary. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Gent, I don't mean to be redundant. Could you read that recommendation one more time, just as slow as you read it? I do mean to be redundant. I do mean, yes, read it one more time.
The recommendation is that facial coverings or masks be required to be worn by students at all times while indoors and on school district property. This includes, but is not limited to, any facility, building, or bus owned, leased, or operated by the district. I also recommend the parent or legal guardian of the student shall have the right and the choice to opt the student from the wearing of face coverings or mask. I recommend that this topic be revisited at subsequent regularly scheduled board meetings as necessary.
Madam Chair, can I move approval of that motion, please, of that recommendation?
Yes, you may move approval. Do we have a second? I am going to second the motion in order to open discussion. Because we can't talk about it if we don't have a motion on the floor. So I will provide the second for that and provide each board member an opportunity to, this is your time to discuss and share your thoughts, so. Dr. Mills?
We are in a war, people, and we're not fighting each other. But we are fighting a virus, a very serious one. We need to be on the same side with this. Because if we find ourselves divided, we can end up in serious trouble, and this virus can win. In fact, it's winning right now. Now, somebody mentioned that masks does not help. I have worn a mask for the entire year since last March. My family has wore masks, and we have practiced social distancing. None of us have even gotten as much as a cold because of wearing masks and social distancing. So we've got to look at the science. We are in this thing together. And even if you don't agree with what I'm saying, I'm sure we all agree that there is a Delta variant of COVID-19 that is hurting, maiming, causing people's lives to get messed up. Yes, the mask can be uncomfortable, but it's not as uncomfortable as being on a ventilator. And if it is your child or my child, as somebody said, the numbers won't make any difference then. It will be COVID has gotten my child. And I believe that we should all look at it like that. Now, I do agree with what Mr. Gent has said in regards to making masks mandatory for now. It's so important that we listen to the science. That the doctor over there that came up, she so eloquently spoke the facts of what's going on. And we've got to look at that because we're in a war. And we have an unseen enemy that we need to address, and we need to kill it. We need to get rid of it. We need to make sure that our children are safe here in St. Lucie County. And Delta 19 has just gone outrageous here in this county. We are now in such a pandemic that the days that people are getting COVID each day outweigh, especially those going into hospitals, higher than any time in this time of us having this pandemic. The thing that I would stop short of with Mr. Gent's recommendation is that I believe the opt-out policy should be only for those children who are medically underlying conditions, those children who cannot wear masks because of their medical condition. I have a grandson who has pulmonary and heart problems. He was supposed to die by the time he was five years old. He is now 16 years old. We have kept that grandson safe to the best of our ability, and we've done everything that we could do to keep him safe. He's gone to public school all his life, and he stayed sick. He stayed sick almost every month. He was sick with asthma and all kinds of different illnesses and easily would catch these germs that were out here. Since we have masked up as a family and since we have social distance, my grandson has not been sick one day this entire year. We've got to listen to the medical doctors. Someone said, "If we were sick with cancer and they told us what to do, we would do it." If we were sick in other areas with heart problems, we'd do what the doctor tells us to do in order to live. So the doctors are now telling us to mask up, and they're telling us to social distance. And already, we've been overwhelmed with new kids that have come into the public school system where I don't see how we're going to really be able to do the social distancing because we have too many children and not enough schools. So that's like almost thrown out of the door. So we got to do something, people. We've got to fight this war with this unseen enemy. You're not my enemy, and I'm not yours. But I'm protecting many of the people that support not masking and not getting vaccinated. And I'm looking out for you too. So you're not getting vaccinated. Most people that's getting this Delta variant is unvaccinated people. I spoke to two other doctors that's not here today, and they said, Cleveland Clinic, I spoke with the CEO, the president of the Cleveland Clinic, Martin County, and the three hospitals. And he said that most of the people in ICU, in fact, he said only one, no, he said all of them. All of the ICU people are unvaccinated people in the hospitals. And then I spoke with the medical doctor from Longwood, and they said, "All of the people in the ICU unit are unvaccinated except one, and that one was vaccinated but had underlying conditions." And I was told that we just had a young baby child that got COVID. They shipped over to the pediatric hospital somewhere. She just died. So, yeah, we got to look out for our children. And if our children are a little comfortable during this pandemic, I call it a plague. We better listen to the plague. So my suggestion, board members, is that we have, yes, an opt-out option, but only for those children whose parents can prove they have underlying conditions.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Others that wish to speak? Mr. Kelly?
Madam Chair. Dr. Mills, I'm going to put it to you in a different fashion. I love and respect you, you know that. And I understand what you're saying. This recommendation that Mr. Gent made, and I give him a lot of credit for what he did on that recommendation. I asked him to read it two times because I wanted you all to hear what he was saying. We walk out of here today, and I don't get another vote on this with Debbie here. We did a disservice to the district because this doesn't need to go on and on and on. You heard, I had our health experts here, we heard it before, what you've said reiterated about vaccines and people need it. This motion that he made, all the people with the signs don't get everything that they wanted. All the people with the masks on don't get everything that they wanted. Because there are things that I listened to, the people with the signs and the people with the masks. They both had good points, okay? Choice. I'm going to sign out there. It says people should have a choice. They should. Lady said that we're not a medical board, do no harm. And that's absolutely true. We're not. But we listen to the science. We listen to the science. We do the best we can. I think you all believe now that we cannot talk to each other. I think you can see that. We can't. But we all, I know, are acutely aware of where we are. And you heard the experts say, "We are worse today than we were one year ago." And I'm concerned about, I want to be honest with you, I have good friends sitting right out there, six or seven of you on each side. And when I leave tonight, you're probably all not going to be happy with me on either side. And that might be a good thing. I don't know. A tie game doesn't make everybody happy, but it's not about that. It's about the kids. This is the best we can do. The law is the law, okay? We are not, I get the seatbelt thing all the time. How many people get that? "Hey, we mandate a seatbelt. It keeps you safe." Seatbelt mandate wasn't done by your local city council or your school boards. That was done by a much higher authority. We have a higher authority that says one thing whether I agree with them or not. Right now, it's the law. And I go with the rule of the law. But what Mr. Gent has come up with gives them choice. And I understand what you're saying, that they should come with a note, with a doctor. Our staff, our teachers, and I'm going to say it, have been through hell this year, as everybody has with your grandchildren and your children. We've been through everything, okay? I do not want our teachers to become masked police as they had to last year. We were under a whole different guideline with the law. This recommendation gives a choice. I don't have little Johnny going into school now with his mask on the bus, and then he takes it off when he gets in class. He's got to have a note, Mr. Gent, I understand, from his parent, right? His parent makes the choice, and if she wants him to opt out, he's got to have a parental note. He doesn't need a doctor's, as Dr. Mills said, but he's got to have permission, right, from his guardian or his parent?
Let me clarify then, Mr. Kelly, that the motion that has been approved or on the floor for discussion with a second is that it would be a parental choice. Dr. Mills has suggested an alternative, but that would have to be voted later. The motion on the floor is for the parent to be able to opt the child out.
Understand. I'm understanding it the right way. But this is something that would be looked at on a periodical basis, sir. It's not something that's in forever. Okay, we did not do that. I don't know if we have the authority to even do that. Anyhow, this is something, this is a middle-of-the-road way to give them choice, I think, and still shows that we're really concerned about our kids. I want to get something done, and this is the best way to do it. And if anything happened tonight, I hope everybody got the proper information. Thank you for putting up with me.
Madam Chair, I need something clarified.
Okay.
After we make this vote, if we vote against it because of whatever part we want to vote for, are we given another opportunity for me to make a motion for what I would prefer?
If the motion fails in a vote, then yes, the floor would be open for another motion to come forward.
I don't think that's what she's asking. I don't think that's what she asked. She's asking if she's going to get an opportunity at another time to talk about this and maybe change it. Is that what you're saying?
Another vote, but you're saying... Place another vote, but you're saying...
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairwoman, I can't hear. I need to hear the microphone.
You're saying that it would have to be three board members to bring up another, bring it up in another fashion to be voted on?
No, I'm saying that the only way another motion could come forward is if this motion on the floor properly now fails.
Right now.
Okay.
But I'm not calling for a vote until all board members have had an opportunity to express their thoughts.
One of the things that I heard Mr. Kelly say is that we can bring this up again if we were to vote according to the superintendent's recommendations. And two weeks from now, we seen the cases go up even higher with that recommendation and that vote. We can revisit this because I'm, you know, she mentioned, Chairman Harley mentioned, it was requested by one of the board members to have this as an emergency item. I'm the board member that requested it to be an emergency item because it is an emergency. And I want to say thank you to the other two board members because we had to have three of them in order to bring this up as an emergency agenda item. I don't know who the other two is, but I thank you for being able to understand and see that it's an emergency because many people seem like they don't understand how, you know, serious this is. So, you know, I said before, when we were talking about stopping the mandatory mask and making it mask optional for the summer, I said not summer because it was too soon. But I agreed with the fall based on the numbers being low. And I said if the numbers go up, we need to watch them very closely. If the numbers go up, we need to re-meet again and re-vote on during that time what we need to do. Because we can't just say, okay, we're gonna do this for the year, we don't know what the year is gonna bring. Now, I do have another question for our attorney. Is this a good time to ask that question?
Yes. Mr. Harold?
Attorney Harold, if we were to just go against DeSantis' orders, and we were to just say mask mandate, okay? What does that entail in regards to, you know, I know he's made all these threats. We would need to hear from you what we would need to do if he was to follow through with those threats or even before he gets that. What would be the next step as legal advice on this?
Well, the next step, Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, likely would be an investigation initiated by the Department of Education. And in fact, that has happened with respect to Leon County. Leon County had essentially a mask mandate with an opt-out, but the opt-out was limited to medical conditions, demonstrated medical condition. The Department of Education has taken the position that that limitation on the parental opt-out violated the emergency rules of the Department of Health and the Department of Education that were issued last Friday, and therefore has initiated an investigation. The results of that, there's a statutory provision relating to those kinds of investigations they can lead to, and I think as the governor has warned or threatened withholding salaries of board members and superintendents. But it could also lead to, under those circumstances, ultimately a recommendation for removal for having violated the rules that govern the school board's action. School boards, unfortunately, you have home rule, but that home rule is tempered by an obligation to follow the Department of Education rules. There is some, of course, we can all question the propriety of the Department of Health rule, of the propriety of the Department of Education rules, but unfortunately, they are what we have to abide by at this point in time. So that's the risk associated with action that is contrary to, contrary to what those rules that were adopted last Friday. And indeed, it has triggered an investigation at Leon County.
Thank you, Mr. Harold.
Mr. Harold, is Leon County the only school that have said with medical permission? Is there any other schools that we have in...
Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, I'm not absolutely certain. The last time I checked, what was going on, it's a few hours ago. This is a very fast-moving matter. It's my understanding that at least one district has decided to mandate masks, period. They have also decided, apparently, to challenge the rules under which Leon is being investigated. Those are difficult paths and not ones that I could recommend under the circumstances. And certainly, a lot of this is not so much legal, but it is also the policy judgment of the district. And I would defer to the superintendent and his recommendation on those matters that address administrative matters and matters on education.
Thank you, Attorney Harold. Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Mills.
I want it to be known that my first priority is for the safety and health of our children. I go as far as what this Miss Hentley said. We need to keep our children safe. Anybody that want to opt their children out, put them in a classroom by themselves so that the rest of our children can be safe. Now, I'm the type of person that I would defy the order, but I don't know if I have that type of support to back that up because I know I need two more board members for that. And we have only heard from me and Jack, I think, so I don't know if I have that or not. But that's what I would prefer, just like we had to get, eventually, it would be mandatory with me to get the vaccine as well, like we had to get it for polio, and we had to get it for mumps, and we had to get it for these other problems that we've had. And I guess after the FDA does their thing, maybe we can look into that on that level. But I want to make sure that I, at this time, I really do appreciate, Mr. Gent, your recommendation. It's better than what was going on. And I can take that and understand that, but I want us to be very watchful, very watchful at these numbers because I really don't want any other child dying from COVID or getting sick or the whole school system have to shut down because it's gotten so out of control. So I must put my trust, I believe I will, this evening with our administration and yourself, to ensure that we will not get to that point. And with that, I've said enough, I think.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll, Ms. Richardson, Ms. Richardson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the two students that we had today, two students, and I'm going to say maybe they may or may not, but they are representative, they are students. And they said that masking, they wanted, you know, to, they embrace the idea of wearing a mask. These were students, these were not parents, these were students. So I'm going to have to, here, we are here to listen to everybody, the educators, the students, the parents, you know, we are here to listen, take your concerns, you know, and make what is considered the best, the wise choice for our students. We are here because of our students. We are here for education. We are here because one of the four pillars is teaching and learning and a safe and caring environment. So we have to provide a safe and caring environment because this is one, this is how our kids learn. They need to know that they are safe. So what is safe? How would they know that they are safe? Well, in my estimation, is if they don't get COVID. If we made the environment safe so that they can come in and know that when they leave that they are COVID-free. Or what we are supposed to do as adults is to care for our children, is to make sure that they are taken care of, to be the best parent, the best school board, make the best decisions for our children, to be their voice. How are we gonna do that? What's in their best interest? I mean, seriously, what is in their best interest? We, if we have to wear a mask for a couple of weeks or months, it's better than not having them with us. But is that in the best interest of our children? We don't need to take this, you know, to any level, you know? Somebody said here, use common sense. What is common sense? No mask. So we need to do whatever is in the best interest of our students. I think that, I know that's why we were elected. The community concerns, the Delta variant, it's like the health director said, you know, it has grown exponentially. So we have to, we have to look at that. We have to look at that. It's worse than it was a year ago. And a year ago, we were wearing masks and we were okay with it. A year ago, we were whatever. But now, we are to a different place, a greater place, where we just, it's not something that we have, we can play with because we are talking about a life. We don't have the options that we have. We don't have the virtual schools, we don't, you know, Mr. Gent, on an interview, he said that, you know, whatever we did last year worked. It worked. That's why we kept down the positivity rates, you know, and everything. We didn't miss a beat. We didn't miss a beat, well, let me say, under normal circumstances. We kept going, you know? And, but we had to take out some of those variables, the masks, the schools. So now, we have to work with what, or it was taken out. So now, we have to work with what we have. But there are things that we can put back in to make sure that our kids are safe. Again, people, the whole meeting, this meeting is about keeping our kids, our children, safe. It's not about you, it's not about me, it's about our children. What's in their best interest? Mr. Gent, Madam Chair, I am a little bit, I'm not confused, but Dr. Mills talked about opting out with the medical, but what's on the floor right now is what Mr. Gent proposed. So that's what we are going to be voting on right now.
That is correct, Ms. Richardson.
And when you said if it fails, what would make it fail? When you said it fails?
The motion has to carry by three votes. If there are not three votes, then the motion would fail and a new...
And a new motion would be on the floor, okay?
A new recommendation.
A new recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, so that, if it fails today, we have a new recommendation tonight to vote on. Okay, all right.
As long as we have three, we have the three board members that agree to that.
I'm sorry?
No, if a motion fails, Dr. Mills, another motion can come forward. It would have to come from a board member because the superintendent has given his recommendation.
Okay, all right. I think I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. We've been here before. Thank you for everyone showing up, and thank you for speaking, and I really do appreciate you taking the time to come out and share, share your facts, share your opinions, and share your hearts. We've all been affected by this. The pressure really doesn't come from the government, governor. You may say the pressure's from the governor. No, because we represent you, and the pressure's coming from you, and we're listening to you. I've been here three, two other times before, I've been here numerous times sitting under pressured situations, and I have to go with my gut and have to go with what I feel, too. Number one is, when we voted to open schools back up, brick and mortar, and go online, we were told that the COVID cases were gonna go astronomical, hospital rates were gonna go up, kids were gonna die, parents were gonna die. I remember that. I'm like sitting there thinking, oh, Lord Jesus, this is not a good situation. This is not a good situation to be in. And it didn't quite happen the way we said it was gonna happen. We opened up our schools. Yes, COVID did go through our schools, yes, people got quarantined, and it did happen. That's the facts. That is exactly what happened. We go to summer school, we make masks optional. Everything ran smoothly. Today, we open up school, and I'm dying. No one has asked, what was the percentage of students wearing masks today? Not anyone got up or sat in front of a school and took note. Did me and you look at it, Mr. Gent? And I said about 60 to 65% of students wore masks today. Without even having this vote or having kids say, hey, wear a mask, don't wear a mask, opt in, opt out, without even saying a word to a kid, about 60 to 65% of the kids wore a mask today. I know because, Jack, you were with me. We were, did you notice?
I think it was higher, I think it was even higher. I agree with you.
You agree with me. Without even having this conversation, 65 to 70% of the students had masks on. So I'm about choice, and I understand it. But I also understand my community, too. I go to a fairly large church on Sunday morning. The first service I went to has 600 to 700 people in it. I probably would think 50 people had masks on on the first service. This is going to spread through our community 100%. I'm gonna watch football games. I'm gonna go to football games here. Kenny, you're gonna be with me on the sidelines watching Central play. It's gonna spread. We have to be vigilant. We have to share our knowledge. And the doctors have been very specific, the vaccine. I lost two friends last week, and I'm not talking about old people, I'm talking about people my age, 47, 47 years old, kid I went to college with, not vaccinated. Kid we went to high school with, me and my brother played football with, passed away, not vaccinated. So I understand it, it's real. We have opened up our schools for kids to get vaccines. We have opened up our schools for our community. We have opened up our churches. We're doing our best. We have to get the word out. We have to be vigilant. But putting a mask on a child all day is not what, is not what I think is the best for our children. And the reason why I say that is, is because we really need to get back to what we were supposed to be doing, and that's educating. And I'm talking about, if you look at the state of Florida, we went down 8%, 8 to 10%. We need to focus on that. I don't want to keep on having these meetings about masks. I want to have a meeting about education. Because if our kids aren't getting educated, there's not gonna be jobs for them to do if they can't read and write. We have to focus on that child that can't read and write. But we also have to educate that child to wash their hands, keep their hands out of their nose and ears and wherever else. Because we have to teach them about sanitary. And I think that's what I got from one of the doctors, is, hey, this is important, and we have to keep on focusing that. We want a social distance, but yes, Dr. Mills, you're right, our schools are pretty crowded. And if we start taking away the rights of some, where are we gonna stop? I mean, we took away prom last year, we took away... I mean, we took away prom last year, we took away homecoming, we took away field trips, we took away football games. So, that's my concern. I know what happens when we start putting our focus on everything else. I've been here before. We start focusing on other things rather than education and our children suffer. They really do. Instead of going upward of student achievement, we'll start plateauing or going down.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Mills?
That's exactly what we all want to do. We want to keep our children in school, we want them to be educated. And that is why we have to deal with this virus, this unseen enemy, to ensure that we don't have to shut down, to ensure that we don't have, people don't have to be out of school too much because of COVID. So, the mask thing, you know, I wanted to ask Superintendent a question about our mask mandate. That would apply to all of our employees as well?
The recommendation was only for students.
Okay, so, um, at this point in time, you don't want to change that recommendation to all staff?
We have to vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Well, if I can continue with my comments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, it's important for children to see us reflect what we're asking them to do. Um, I think it is entirely wrong to have the children mask up and not the adults. Because many, you know, these are, the adults, really, the ones that are not masking up, not all of them, but many of them, are the, the people who are getting COVID right now. That's the group. And until we get the vaccinations, right now, we're at the 50 percentile, without county, with vacu, uh, evacuate vaccinations. We need to be at 80%. And the mask is just to be there until we get to the 80%. So as we get the numbers up with the vaccines, the mask can begin to come off once we get it to where the doctors say it needs to be. So I can, I mean, that seems to me just kind of, I mean, is something wrong with me here that, that we would not have the teachers also mandated for our teachers and our, and our employees and our staff? Not, who is that?
Choice.
Well, that's if you let everybody have a choice, but I'm not talking about choice. I'm talking about mandating masks for everyone. So, so, I, like I told you before, I'm in this with you whether you realize it or not. So, I, I believe that the teachers should also mask up. You know, we had a summer program. All of our students wore masks. It didn't hurt them, they had a ball. These kids had an absolute ball. But they understood that we were requiring masks, okay? We, adults, we all were vaccinated. We were all vaccinated, but we wore masks because we are the, we are the example to the children. I'm wearing a mask now, not because I'm afraid of COVID, but because I know that it does attack people now that have had the vaccine as well. I don't want no COVID at no, no level. So until the numbers go up with the vaccines and the numbers go down with the COVID, I will be put wearing this mask. So I, you know, I, I'm glad I asked that question because I thought, I just automatically took it upon myself to think this was mandate was for everyone. So I'm very interested in knowing why you would not make a recommendation that included
There could be, um, if it's a, it would be a legal question, is that something that would have to be a working condition and negotiate it with our, our bargaining partners?
And David is gone, but okay, I hear what you're saying.
Uh, yes, he left a long time ago.
Madam Chair, my, my last voice, I'll try it one more time. I want to pass this, I'm, I'd like to pass it with five. I don't think they're going to get that. But, uh, Dr. Don Mills, I, I, I think I, I did address that, I tried to address everything I could. I have the same concern, but I think I told you, uh, this building today was not mandated that they wear masks. Every, you saw it, you were here, everyone in the building, all the administrators, the school that I was at today with Troy, okay, I did not see a teacher or administrator, maybe Troy, I did not see one without a mask. I did see an entire bus of children get off, an entire bus, and I had a sheriff's deputy that was actually counting with me, and Troy's right, but it might be a little bit higher. An entire bus, every child on that bus had a mask on. This motion that he, this recommendation that he is making, okay, it, it's sort of down the middle, there is choice here. It is not the choice the way you would like a doctor's certificate or whatever, but again, I don't think I want to mandate our teachers and staff to be, you know, mask police. This is a good way, and Troy, this makes us move on. I want to get off this mask thing too. I want to get onto educating people, why we tried to in the beginning, and you're right, that's what we got to do, is educate everybody. And I, and I did have a consensus that I wanted to get at the end of the meeting, if you would let me, that it is good news, that I wanted to ask about regarding getting the word out there and getting some incentives. But this is the best, the best thing that I think that we can do right now and, and to move on off of this and bring it back, Mrs. Mills, like we said, you can bring it back at some time, it's, it's in his recommendation. Troy, I agree with you, we got to educate these people, but I want, I want to get off the mask thing. We got other things to do, it's the beginning of school, this is the best recommendation. I, I, when Mr. Gent made that recommendation, that's why I had him read it two times. It doesn't solve everything, but it makes us move on to where we have to be. Health, health, safety and welfare, that's what we're about. We're not a, uh, we're not a health board that, like the lady said, that's true. But I don't want to do any harm either, so it's the best way to go right now. Please.
Thank, thank you.
I'm begging.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I want to be sure Mr. Ingersoll has had the opportunity to share everything.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Mills?
Based on what I'm hearing you guys say, as far as the schools that you went to and you saw, I think you said 60%?
At least.
Oh, you still got a big old whopping 40% for one thing. And I had a parent call me this morning in a panic state because she went into her, she took her kid into the classroom and the teacher had no mask after the teacher said that she would wear a mask in the class. So the parent is saying to me, I want my child out of that classroom. Do they have an option to, for their child to go out of the classroom because of this and put him somewhere else? Because just like you're trying to protect the rights of people who are saying option, you got to protect the rights of people who are saying mask. So, you know, I'm, I'm through.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Uh, Madam Chair, um, Mr. Gent, I'm sorry to do this to you, but I too was under the impression that it was like, you know, everybody was under that umbrella. Could you read that for me one more time?
The recommendation?
Yes, please.
My recommendation is that facial coverings or masks be required to be worn by students at all times while indoors and on school district property. This includes but is not limited to any facility, building or bus owned, leased or operated by the school district. I also recommend that the parent or legal guardian of the student shall have the right and choice to opt out the student from the wearing of the face coverings or mask. I recommend this topic be revisited at subsequent regularly scheduled board meetings as necessary.
Is there a date for the next time that we could, we would look at this? Is that like 30 days, 60 days, 10 days?
The intent was, uh, the, the first board meeting, that we have our regularly scheduled meetings, these meetings, so it's almost, it's like 30 days.
So to be like always on the agenda if we need to have a discussion about it?
That's correct.
Pretty much? So we wouldn't have to call the chairman to ask her to put it on the agenda?
No, his, his recommendation has it at subsequent board meetings.
Okay.
Okay, well, I would like an opportunity to express my views as well.
Very patient.
Um, as you all can see, we're very passionate about this. Each of us is concerned about the children and the staff that make up the St. Lucy Public School system. We are constitutional officers. When we took that oath, that oath was to uphold the law and to provide a free and appropriate education for all students in our district. We, we recited our treasure hunter pledge. It ends that all children, all children are capable of success. This board has always been one to say, all means all. And I've heard all of you tonight, and I want to say my thanks, the board thanks for being here, for expressing your thoughts, for being respectful of others, allowing people to talk and, and express their views. But I have a couple of stories I want to share with you. One of them, just as Mr. Kelly and Mr. Ingersoll today and Mr. Gent went to schools and were part of Tunnels of Hope, I too did that. And I went to one school and when the tunnel was over, I went inside the school office to see if there was anything I could do, if any children needed help finding their teacher or whatever. And there was a youngster sitting off to the side with a mask on. So I asked the principal, can I take him to his room? Do we know where he needs to be? And she said, no, he's on the quarantine list. He's not supposed to be here, so we have to call the parents. This was a parent that made a decision to send their child to school knowing that they had been exposed and should be in quarantine. And part of what we're asking is for parents to make good decisions. Now, I am not by any means suggesting that that parent is reflective of the majority of the parents in this district, not by any stretch. But it struck me that a child that should be in quarantine because of the Department of Health contract, contact tracing, had been sent to school on a bus. Many of you have mentioned a year ago. Well, a year ago was very different from where we are now. Because a year ago, pretty much the whole world was still shut down. People weren't going to work, people weren't going to church, there were not activities taking place. We were self-contained in our bubbles. And that makes a huge difference today when they come to school for six and a half to seven hours. And the rest of the 24 hours in the day, they're home, they're who knows what because there isn't that self-contained bubble anymore. And for the school district to have to be responsible in that seven and a half hours for what happens with that child all the other hours of the day, seems to me that, that negates a lot of the comparison from a year ago to today. Because we can't be with that child when they're not in school. And I certainly don't sit up here, and a good many of you in the audience, I've talked to personally, you've called me, you've emailed me, I have spent many, many hours, just as I'm sure my fellow board members have, talking and listening with you all. And it's just as it was tonight, it's very obvious that it is a very split. Any given day, there could be 49% for mask, the next day, 49% for not mask. It's just that close. So as I started to say, I, I certainly don't profess to know everything, but I do know a few things that I want to share with you. I have a good friend who has a son who is eight years old. He should be, and he is right now, in our public schools. But she was talking with me over the weekend and she said, Debbie, if a mask mandate is inflicted, my son won't be able to go to school because he has such a respiratory issue, which I was aware of, she wasn't just coming up with it. But he can't wear a mask. It would endanger him. And I feel that there are other students in that same respect. And the idea of putting them in a separate room or whatever, that doesn't sit well with me either because our motto is each child every day. We are here to educate. That is our constitutional authority to do. So, this is very broad and we are trusting, if this motion passes, we are indeed trusting that parents will do the responsible thing as well. A couple of you have said to me over the last couple of weeks, you know, I really wouldn't want to be sitting in your seat right now. And it's been tough. I mean, I will share even within my own family, there's division over the mask situation. But I was elected to represent all of the people, all of the students of St. Lucy County. And the only way to do that in this instance is to listen to all of you. The passion you have is obvious. And I am not here to judge that one is more important than the other because it's all, in my eyes, equally important. And I believe that each of you, just as each of us, has the best interest of our students at heart. And for those reasons, I will hear each of you and I will support the motion that is on the floor because one size doesn't fit all. When I looked at my friend's son and the thought of him not being able to attend school, which is his right because of his health condition, and then there's another one, such as Dr. Mills mentioned, was her grandson. The mask has benefited him greatly. But I don't think we want to be putting, pitting students against each other either. So, after listening to you all and a lot of consideration, I will be in support of the recommendation that's on the floor. Is there any other? Hearing none?
Yes, any more comments?
Yes.
I definitely want to revisit this at the next board meeting. And based on what we may be going through or may not be going through as a school district, we bring it back before, again, for discussion and vote. And with that being said, I'm willing to go with the recommendation as it stands. I'm very disappointed that teachers, I'm almost not willing to go for it because I feel the teachers should be, it should be mandated for the adults if we're going to mandate it for the kids, but we'll revisit that. We'll revisit, revisit that, um, at the next board meeting and see how things are going.
And I do want to be sure everyone understands the verbiage. And I do want to be sure everyone understands the verbiage. It's not a mandate, it's a recommendation that they wear. It's not a mandate, and there is the choice to opt out.
Oh, it's not a mandate? Mask mandate?
Read the-
The, the, it's a requirement for, for students to wear a mask, but the parents have the choice to opt that child out to not wear a mask.
So, it's a requirement for all children to come to school with the mask?
Unless the parent-
It's not a strong suggestion, it's a requirement.
It's a requirement, and it, and, and then the second part of that recommendation is that parents have that choice to opt their child, yeah, to opt their child out.
Right. As long as it's a requirement of the school district, and that's what you're saying.
Yes.
So, requirement to me means mask mandate.
It's a stronger verbiage.
Unless there's an option to opt out, unless they want to opt out.
Correct.
And then they have to go through that, 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 those steps of opting out, right? It's not, do they have to go with filling out a form or to opt out?
You know, as, as staff, you know, we can work, we have cabinet meeting first thing in the morning, we could look at that where it's, you know, we, we do a form, we can do it online, where the parent, you know, sends that in, you know, and then, then we're aware of that, you know, so that's, that can be easily done.
For that student, right?
For, for the student, correct.
Okay. All of the students must wear the mask.
Yes, the requirement is that's-
We can't, uh, Mr. Superintendent?
No, no, I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep this as simple as I can.
Go ahead and cast the vote. I'm making it too hard for me.
No, I, I think everyone needs to know when this would take an effect.
It would take effect tomorrow. Now, it'll take us a day or two to get the information to the parents. We're, we're prepared to do a call out tonight and to notify them of whatever the vote is of the board. And then, then tomorrow, cabinet will meet in the morning, information will go to the schools, and within 48 hours, you know, definitely by Monday, we're set to go. I do want to comment, too. I was in several schools as well. I know you want to take the vote. I was very, very impressed with the number of students and staff wearing masks. One high school was 80%, another was 75%, and these are our oldest students. Some of them have been vaccinated. There was also a student in a story of a child that went into the class and the parent gave them the choice whether they wear it or not. She walked in, it's a class of 15, and 13 had a mask on, and she stuck hers on. So, that pressure, you know, that was there. And I think the students are, are used to that from last year. So, the recommendation is, you know, it's a requirement, but parents have the choice to opt out of that. And then we'll work out the details of how they notify the school centers. And then it, revisit it at the next board meeting, which would be in 30 days.
But for the immediacy of it, Superintendent Gent, we're not saying that all children need to come to school with a mask tomorrow.
No.
We can't, right? I think that's kind of what you were asking as well, when does this, no, it's, okay. Well, I think it's important for everyone to know that it's, we don't expect, as a result of this vote at 8 o'clock for 12 hours from now.
No, I wasn't expecting that period. That's not what I'm saying at all. What I am saying, and I want everybody to be clear on what I'm saying, is if we require children to come to school with masks, it, we, that's what we're requiring. We're not letting kids come to school without masks when they have not, when the parent has not opt out. That's all I want to know.
Yeah, we will do, we will set up a, a way to get the input from the parent to notify the school that they want their child to opt out. That will take us a couple of days to do that.
You know, it's hard sometimes to, to figure out what's all in between the, what's being said, but I just wanted to make sure that requiring means that we require kids to come to school with masks unless the parent has opt out for their child.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And I, before I totally call for the vote, I want to echo what other board members have said as well. You know, the one student that sat there today that was in quarantine or should have been kept home, that struck me. But the other thing that struck me, to echo the others, it was amazing how many students were there in mask and how many parents said, you know, on the way in, we left it up to the child. That's choice. So, I, I was a, a little bit taken back to, to see that many of all ages because I visited K through 12 throughout the day today. So, anyway, that was just an aside. Okay.
Madam Chair, before we, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page. Now, when we come back in 30 days to visit this, we can speak to Mr. Freeland about the teacher, that, that aspect of, we would have had that conversation with him and-
Well, not, not we?
I understand, yes, yes.
Right, okay, yes, absolutely.
That, that conversation we had, and then it's something that we can, okay.
I think-
Just want to get that on the record.
I think the superintendent heard us on that to investigate that.
All right, thank you.
All right. We ready to vote? Anyone need the motion read again? I, I want to be sure everybody's clear.
Now you can see why I wanted it read again.
Yeah.
Five times.
All right. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion and second of the recommendation on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ingersoll.
I just need clarification. I know we've talked about bringing it back. Are we talking about the workshop or the board meeting?
The regularly scheduled board meeting.
30 days. Yes, ma'am. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair, again, rules of order and everything else. In order for any part of this to come back, a board member would have to contact her, she'd have to get two other, Dan, are you listening to me? This would have to be brought back by three board members.
It's-
Or Mr. Gent to put it on.
Bring another recommendation.
I hate to labor it, but let's make it the right way, okay?
Where our audience is getting restless, let me say again, we appreciate you being here and sharing and listening. We do appreciate it. We know you have our children at heart as well, and thank you for that. We do not have any other unscheduled speakers that I, that came before us on another item, so we are adjourned and safe travels home.
I did have a, I did have-